Yeah, he probably yeah call. Okay, we're uh now call the uh Honeyburg Common Council.
Institute of the United States of America. In due to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in this hope for liberty and justice for all.
Your Father God, thank you for uh elected officials we have here at the day that are making decisions for our city. Thank you for those that are in the audience and those that are follow us and and uh make the recommendations and and keep keep us honest in our decisions. We ask now uh today uh as we own this meeting that you may be with us. Guide director thoughts of the decisions we make here maybe for the benefit of all citizens of the city of Honeyburg. These things you ask your son's name. Just approval on the minutes.
Make motion to approve the minutes.
Got first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the claims.
I'm going to approve the claims.
Got first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First thing uh we have uh here, there's a uh we have a invoice here. Well, a purchase order, I should say. For a Honeyburg City Park, we're replacing quite a bit of the actually, this is just the first phase of uh the idea is get everything down at the main park place. Working South Side Park two over the next year uh. We freezer, this will be funded through both uh the existing lit funds that are left in the park budget as well as a an additional thirteen thousand on the park budget itself. Now we did receive the discount of about seventeen thousand six hundred dollars off the equipment. Total amounts eighty-six thousand. Parks Board approved this last meeting. Uh we're also working with Game Time, the uh part of uh Ondia Partners. To get that down even more, uh there's a possibility that we may be able to get a grant that could cover up to uh twenty thousand uh which is the remainder of the actually twenty-two thousand. The remainder of the original cost of equipments, because we got right now thirty-nine thousand with equipment plus a discount to that we paid about twenty-two for it. Uh if we purchase more equipment, uh there's possibly we can get anywhere from fifty to a hundred percent grant funding to uh to cover the difference. Grant does not cover installation or shipping. So really all I'm asking for tonight, those that approve this but the money has been budgeted. If we can move forward, possibility we could actually get some of this uh equipment started here real soon. At least by spring uh totally.
And you said this is going to replace some of the existing at the main park?
Yeah. I've actually met with them, we've gone through those things that we think that are repairable, that they still sell parts for, those things they don't sell parts for. What we need to get out of there, what's dangerous. Uh everything that's gonna be at the main park uh that you see on the north side of the park would become actually maybe one large unit that so kids, there'll be sections for different age groups that they can go to. Uh it'll all be together, it'd be real impressive, let's just put it that way. Uh being able to put that there, I think it'd be something that uh no other park around us will would have this type of equipment.
Is it the goal to to with the park that's down by the oh would be uh east of the big shelter house? And down there by the by the volleyball courts. We're we're thinking that that will someday not be there and all the equipment in that park.
Some of that equipment could re- relocated. There's one structure that came from Maple Park that really just needs to come down. That's on the south side of the park. Uh there's some other equipment up there uh. The the uh women's softball field that needs to be replaced. What we're really looking at uh there is reconfiguring. We have a daughter that may be uh helping us uh reconfigure the fields and have new concessions stand that we could actually move some of those fields around, put a playground right there in the middle of all those fields. So as the kids are playing, the other kids could be there, be seen. At that area recently, we like to put the top the hill with this one. And now we're gonna move really this one over and utilize uh but put a field down closer, put a playground closer to the playing fields. Uh make it safer. Kid, because really right now what's happening, kids are running the other side of the park playing playground. Uh where the other kids are playing baseball for some. It's not a good, they just can't keep their eyes on them. Some of them don't, but here they're having closer will help. This will be the first phase, making that whole project happen. Though would this be a special purchase based on well, did it actually the deduction that this kind of?
No, I think Ondi, well, Ondi partners uh they are a purchasing uh cooperative. So these have been bid. Ondi has drawn out uh bid these prices. And the state recognizes those as a benefit. So it's a purchasing cooperative. It is those in other units of government, they value.
He says the park board has approved this.
Yeah, last thing.
I'm going to approve uh purchase of this.
I'll second it.
We have first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
See opposed? Motion carries. Uh the next one, uh we have a piece of property uh on Leonard's Parkway. Just kind of for sake of it will be the two lots that are uh directly west of the existing Arby's location. We have another uh a real estate firm out of Indianapolis looking for it to bring in a uh another business, a restaurant actually uh for there and it would be locally owned restaurant. And uh the we've had two uh two different uh appraisals. Based upon those appraisals, uh these exceed the average of the two appraisals. We have an offer for that property of one seventy-four.
Ninety-five.
Seventy-four ninety-five. Uh that includes uh them also reimbursing us for the price of those two appraisals. They'll also in the end be responsible for uh paying for the sewer line minus a credit of three years of um adjusted uh usage off of that cost. Now, right now, we have the estimated cost of the sewer line run completely across the property at about twenty-eight, roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars. Paying that based upon what we've done with the everybody else, they do get a three-year credit from our revenue for the three years projected. We do have their usages we received last week, but we haven't computed it. So probably be about eleven thousand dollar credits, so in that range. So we're probably looking at about seventeen thousand. Right now, that'll go towards that sewer line replacement. While we're doing it, we'll go ahead and run the sewer all the way to the corner for the next lot while we're in that process, a lot of that's gonna help us uh. But maybe, you know, we'll put the manhole at the very end of the line. Versus right now, there's it's right there by Arby's. And rather just dead end, it will be good for us for the eighteen. And it'll be ready for the next, so.
But with the sale, where were where were those persons? Those dollars go?
They they're going to jail.
It's the city's property.
And then you can incorporate it on the uses.
Yeah, this uh is part of a uh mainstream economic development area. You could even appropriate it back into that development area for other uses to expand it, that's a possibility to. But it had to be re-appropriated by the council, understanding like they have it.
So this is an economic development area, they recall mainstream economic development areas was created of ideas of course. And under that statute, there are under the statute for the sale of real estate by vehicles. There's a somewhat abbreviated process. Uh it's required that to probably be appraised by two presumes, twice the present, which has been done. And that you must receive at least the average of the two appraisals. This happens any more than the average of the two appraisals. The excess represents the cost of the appraisals plus the real buyer's condition, real estate condition. That's all being rolled into the price they're paying for all that. And then the council has to not the public hearing to determine the advisability of the sale. After the public hearing, uh you take out the resolution authorized sale. But the first step is to adopt the resolution determining you have an interest in vesting the sale of this property for the offered price of one hundred seventy-four thousand ninety-five dollars. Each should have helped you have.
They have resolution number is.
Zero.
Two thousand twenty-five twenty-one. So we're not selling it yet.
Uh yeah, you have to have a a conducted public hearing and uh we need days to advertise, and so I guess I could do it at your next uh next October meeting. We do need to fill in a date there and.
Man, said that you have sell at such hearing.
Yeah, October be the October meeting is on the fourteenth. We wouldn't have time to get that notice else.
Give us twenty-one days.
So it gives time to get the meeting down.
As we just reset for fourteen.
Motion for the fourteenth.
I'll make that motion to approve the resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Okay, are we setting the date or are we doing the rest?
So once in a
You can do that.
Can we do both in one?
The motions.
Your motion to approve the resolution and setting up the date of October fourteenth for later.
I'll second. The first second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are they disclosing publicly what their intent is? Oh, not use the property for? It would be a restaurant. Yeah. Is your Yeah, it it is, and it it will be a it will be a locally owned restaurant too. That's right now, we can't disclose who the final person is. Uh but it'll be somebody that personally operates restaurant.
Resolution isn't we have a role call?
Yeah, I can say real. Uh Kissler.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Uh Boltie.
Aye.
Fair. Four eyes, one ass. Thank you. Uh next thing we have up uh today is actually you're kind of finishing up uh last day of Constitution Week, uh we did post citizens on our social media last week. Uh Daughters of American Revolution V A R uh and and ask that we do this proclamation and celebration for Constitution Week, so and read that here. So uh whereas a proclamation reads, whereas September seventeen twenty twenty-five marks the two-hundred thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution, the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document in its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States exec designated September seventeenth through the twenty-third is Constitution Week. Now therefore, I deal Alkins Mayor Honeyburg in the entity hereby proclaim September seventeenth through the twenty-third of twenty twenty-five is Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to affirm the ideals of the favors of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by viscerally protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberty, remembering that lost rights may never be reclaimed. Witness whereof I have here unto set my hand and fix the fish and seal City Honeyburg on the seventeenth day of September twenty twenty-five A D. In the Alkins Mayor. Next up, uh we have embassy to John Reeb.
It adds another couple of services of this move. And uh this month, one of our crew members been busy down on First Street. Same with the structure through down there. Melling Brothers, they were taking out the middle for our gas mine, gas line line, so we have all service taps on that. So they helped uncover the locators. And verify it. At the mark. That was. Yeah, we were all three, two, three weeks ago, we all had them in on the outside. Triple check with for some service lines they had to cross. I was actually down there when they uncovered the one. Now, if you can see in the picture what they found, when they pour out of pavement. They did not, yes, they did it, I've been there before they uncovered it. Knew they get close to it, I stayed down there with other gas crew member. And that's what we found. It's like a shit with a back hole about it. Probably a year, a year ago, when they put a concrete road in. I put a big bow in it. You see where the size of a bucket hit it, keened it, wrapped it. Well, then covered the wrap and there was a big kick in one edge. And then the other side where the back hole back probably caught it. It was wrapped, had moisture in it. And with that moisture in there, it started to corrode the line. And then uh they had a lot tracks with a rock coming in the next day, so the first thing in the morning, we had to go down there and run a new line. We lowered it, that's steel line, so. It was time to get down there, we got it replaced in time for then the digging factor schedule on excavating. That turned out pretty good. Looks like it was very important to have a guy down there while they did the whole run.
You don't know what you're gonna find when you dig something up.
Actually, they're on the uh, you can see in the picture that with a guy standing, we put rock shield on it, because the line looked fine then. Melling uncovered, then went terrible T, uncovered the other half, that's what we found, so it's kind of a good thing that they did take out the north panel. Would might have a leak there six months a year down the road and that came and all that rolled up, that was the plus.
Where is the name? Is it on the south side?
It's in the middle toward the south. Around the edge where Melling.
This is service line in?
Yeah.
It's going to somebody's house.
Yeah, I want to my doubt, these gas metering. They're allowed with the road. But all the taps right inside were Melling would dig and the taps stick up higher than the gas main, so. So we had to have somebody there just.
He seemed to didn't pull out on the meter.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, it was done like fifty years ago. So we corrected that. I think we're about done down there probably gas, so. Turned out good. Now your RC auditors came in last week, there were two-day orders on our C P program, the product protection on our steel lines. Here the voltage induced on air to help prevent corrosion. And it turned out real well. We pretty did change that ninety-five gas meter this month, just quite a bit. Now it's system about eighty-five percent complete. And I do have a quote from Cora Main. We gave them antenna and a base station over our Ireland area. But right now, we presently can't pick up a lot of our gas reads on our new census meters. So we did a propagation study on it since from census. So we needed a uh antenna put over the Jasper Ireland area to get the signals over here. So we did buy a pole last year, got it set. This is for them to come to the antenna and the base station at the bottom, which will relay the gas read over to the billing office here. Like forty-sixty-nine thousand six eight two twenty. If only one company that does on census. They have a contractor that does, that's the only vendor we could get a quote from. Probably have a few others. That is though, pardon, and install price?
Yeah.
Installed, put in service.
John, with that, I don't want to stop your approval here, but we do have an antenna we removed off the south tower, if that'll work for you.
We got, uh they gotta put a three sixty.
That that's what this is, that's that was taken down and put a different antenna on the south tower. Uh but we might look at that too.
Yeah. The then we got to put later, we're gonna put one of them out by our Midwest station. I got a pole set there. But right now, maybe next year. There's just one antenna over there on the Jasper area.
Come on table, please, to check in and see if that will work.
I I go ahead and vote off these things forever. I said I'd go ahead and vote off these things, take forever to get. If it works, you'll save mine on the dot, he'll be able to.
Using that one on the next poll he wants. You got more than one of these?
I got a whole set to Texas teaser in Ireland, I got a whole set Midwest down my stendo.
Yeah.
Propagation six seventy-two. But right now, our our main problem is our on Jasper area. See our Caspoca line, which is down by Lake on Lake Comer. That's another area. We've got a whole pole set, so. So next year, we'll probably have to do the Midwest part.
How long did those last?
Years and years.
And that's a lot of money pressed, like for the Ireland and you know what I mean, just that area.
A lot of gas sold out. We own, we own everything.
Isn't her close to thousands?
There's probably more customers over there than there is in town.
Over five hundred customers over there.
She got a couple of big farmers, huh?
Yeah. Right now, when we read our meters, it was probably forty, fifty. It's not picking up, but then we got it over manually. And it reads, do paperwork. Do paperwork back, that's every month.
Also, good man, I think. This quote all already acknowledging that the poles are there. The the installation price that we're seeing here doesn't include a pole.
No.
They're they're already there, they know that.
Mm-hmm, it's a hundred and ten foot pole, so.
As long as we had a um that comes set for us.
Yeah, about two months.
Yeah. Pull up, I can't remember the name of that.
So they gotta get a truck to go up that high. But ninety-seven feet underground. They don't call it all that down. You get a base station, they can hunt the bottom.
Yeah, just get it. It's a hundred and forty dollars per customer. With those five hundred customers, so it's about plus the meter.
Yeah, that's really not terrible.
What is the, what is that first line item represent the M forty-two oh eight?
Yeah.
It's in town, base station.
Good.
Unmake motion approved, well.
I'll second.
Yeah, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, you have a freshman on the gas?
No, I do think I checked if Steve Keard if his uh agenda would work on direct.
Yeah.
You know, I'm thinking about that with them. I do remember we changed some things out on his part.
Hey, we're gonna do. And here he's, you know, looking at browsing cheddar.
Holy, I got the holy.
Don't just give that away.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
It's just funny, just funny to wait until the night to bring that up.
Tomorrow won't exist. Thank you, Jim.
My left side. They set three and fold, new duplex on Seventh Street. We got service run to the first two they built. Uh we're waiting, we're ready to run the service to the next group. Get them done, like they're coming along, we're pretty well completed. Then we set a new pole on Van North Van Muren between Seventh and Eighth. There's two more duplexes that are being uh under, they're gonna go under construction. Uh where we had to set a pole to serve them to, right where there was a frontier pole in the sidewalk. So we got with Frontier, we got their permission. We got with Rich. And we figured out where we could probably attach to our new poles, we could get rid of them old frontier poles that were in the sidewalk. So we called Frontier, got their permission. So when we set the pole, you can see in the picture that uh where it looks now, there's no poles in the sidewalk. Much better, so that turned out pretty good. It wasn't line going down, the old frontier posts, we had to dig it up, move it to the new pole. We had their permission.
That's the driveway, those apartments from access, so it moves out the travel.
Make the sideline better when they're pulling out. But yeah, the better deal all the way around though.
And crew been working behind venue fourteen oh eight Dairy Queen, we're rebuilding that line. Uh we set a new pole for Dairy Queen, we're looking, checking their metering out. Pretty old, pretty need to replace pretty bad, so. Uh actually, they did uh shut down this morning on Dairy Queen, changed all services over, could all be metering up. So that turned out real well. And if I don't, we like it, any questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Uh where's Dairy Austin?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Very good. Well, we'll jump right into distribution here. Uh we uh had a concession, Purman Geiger, uh John kind of touched base on that last month with his uh gas repair. We kind of followed behind him, ours took a little longer, so I didn't report much of it on uh last month's report. But uh during a uh gas main repair, we didn't find that we had an old repair clamp that had uh that wasn't fully stainless steel, uh when it was uncovered, it was leaking. Uh it didn't look like it had been leaking long, it kind of looked like maybe when the soil was disturbed, it had relieved pressure on it. So uh there we found what we find most intersections, uh with at least down four inch. Uh we had the water main that uh runs down Third Street east to west, has already been replaced and upsized. But this four-inch water main also ran down to both intersection at Third Main and Walnut Main, uh was still live. It didn't go anywhere, had no services on it, it was just kind of capped at those intersections, the water was in it for the full thousand feet there. Uh so we uh we did have to shut down water to a couple of blocks there. And we were able to pull that cross out, rebuild that intersection to get all that small downer pipe out of there to help uh increase water flow. And anytime we have four-inch water main in town, you guys have seen kind of what uh metallic water main does with minerals and stuff, how it starts to congest. Uh it uh it really helps our water quality out as well. So uh we took care of that problem. And then uh jumped out to Hunter's Crossing, uh they're on Wilson Circle, kind of service line to repair there. Uh it's due to a film copper line again. Um we'll continue to uh take those as they come. And then uh we uh oh, less point five, it's the uh factory that had the roof blow off of it months ago in storm. Uh they have decided they are going to demolish parts of that building and only keep a certain section of it. So uh we had to kind of move around our fire leads to that building. Uh we'd installed a new valve in there and then also um move their current service to a different part of the building that is still gonna be in service for them. So uh we we teamed up with those guys and uh kind of took care of that, kind of had to go go in all at once. They had to cut a hole in the floor to uh bring their line in. Uh meter, the meter set was fairly close to the building. Uh, meter, the meter set was fairly close to the building, so it was easier to run the service line from the side of the building out and then tie it into the, the meter pit itself. Uh, so we went from there, uh, we did find two old service lines at Clay Street and Ethan Clay. Uh, when they were doing the road replacement up there that were buried instead of being removed. So we, uh, we did remove those, kind of the same way, we got lucky, the contractor was up there, just grazed them, smashed them, didn't pull them out of the warming, didn't cause any big issues for us. So, um, but pulled them off, that way we have, uh, no more issues there. Uh, from there, we, um, kind of touched base on that a little bit last, last meeting too, um, it was right there before the meeting, but we did have a warming break there at, uh, Maple and Hickory Streets. Uh, it is, it is amazing that we've had a few issues with here in the past, probably ten years, uh, it is on our schedule to be replaced, it's just not at the top of our schedule. Due to horse mains in town. Um, from there, we, um, we've been doing a lot with valve boxes. With all the pavement work going on in town, Third Jackson Street and Church and Clay Street. Uh, we had a lot of them damaged in the construction of re asphalting those roads. Um, we had a lot of valve boxes that were covered up, but we had to go out and find a metal detector and ship asphalt away from. Uh, so we spent quite a bit of time following up, uh, following up on that, that way we can get those valves for water being shut offs whenever we do have issues. Uh, from there, we worked on a first street block hydro excavation back up site, we've talked about that before, we've got a spot down there that we dump, we let it dry and we're able to haul it out to Ralph Ligers. Uh, to dump it out there, we've, uh, we've been putting our hydro excavator to good use. We're, uh, we're really racking up the hours on that thing, it's, uh, a great tool to have and, uh, we really appreciate it, uh. We, uh, have probably one of our most valued tools at this point with all the utilities in the ground, we didn't know, uh, we didn't know how bad we had it till we got one. But, um, and then, uh, from there, uh, we did have, we had Hero Day Farmers Market, we did take a dump truck and a mini excavator down there, uh, something for the kids. We let them crawl a mini excavator, play with the air horn and dump truck. Um, something that the kids really enjoy and, uh, the, the guys usually, it's, we usually send two guys down there and we kind of got to draw straws, who gets the, because everybody wants to go. Uh, and then, uh, from there, we assisted the Parks Department with some irrigation issues, they had leak stadium. Uh, we used a hydro excavator for that, they had quite a few, um, leaks out there, we were able to go out there and make quick and easy work of it without tearing up large areas. And then, um, we did find a valve that was abandoned in the east one hundred block of Third Avenue. Um, the, the valve itself was in a curb line. Um, nobody really knew where it went, we didn't know what it did, it's off, been off for a few years. We finally had some time to, uh, kind of look into that. And, uh, it was just kind of about a ten foot stick of pipe hanging out of it into a residence yard. So, uh, we went out there and did away with that valve, um, when we did dig the valve up, it was an old limited valve, so. It's, uh, the bolts on it were zinc bolts, they were pretty corroded. So just trying to eliminate future problems there when we can do them in a timely manner on our schedule. Uh, other than that, distribution, we, uh, did, uh, start hydro flushing this month. So you'll see us out about throughout the town, uh, taking care of that, this, uh, in the fall, we take our static residual and yam for minute reads, uh, for ISO numbers for the town. So we do, uh, we do include Donnie Hyman with that, he works with us when we do that stuff, we've, we've done a lot here, we'll have our ISO audit in the, uh, first week of October. Uh, we really kind of ramped up our GIS data as far as what's stored in that for our fire hydrants. And how we can download and input that into that. Uh, it's something that the, the ISO auditor, last time they came, they really suggested they'd love to see that and makes it easier on them. Um, so we've been, we've been working on that for the last few months, kind of behind the scene to get ready for hydrant flushing, but we'll probably still be flushing hydrants, uh, till at least the end of this month. Uh, with hydro flushing, we usually find our weak spots in our warmanes, uh, we find problematic fire hydrants. And it never fails every year, we will find a couple, um, whenever we do find an issue with a fire hydrant, we, uh, let the fire chief know. We do, uh, put a bag around that fire hydrant, just as a visual, if they do ever have a call out. That way the firefighters know that, that is an out of order fire hydrant, uh, they are told as well, but the blood's pumping, we're excited and sometimes you forget. Um, with that, we do try to get those either repaired or replaced as quick as possible. Uh, fire hydrants are very, very expensive, uh, they range anywhere from four thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars depending, depending on buried depth. Uh, we do try to keep four to five different buried depths in stock, but we can't keep them all. So, um, sometimes it takes a little longer to order them in as, as needed. Uh, but we, uh, we do try our best to get those back in service, uh, you know, it's something me and Donnie talked about last week. And the community, we have a fire hydrant at least every five hundred feet in town. Um, they carry over fifteen hundred feet of hose on the trucks. So as far as a public safety standpoint, uh, every resident in town is, is protected when it comes to fire safety. Other than that, we, uh, we went to the filter plant and, uh, other than moving forward with our filter five and seven rehabilitation, uh, it is running as, uh, as it should. And then, um, our metering system, as of September nineteenth, we have eighteen large diameter meters to finish out our system. So that's, uh, pretty big for us, it's, it's been a bear to get these things scheduled and it seems like at least every other one we try to change, we're rebuilding a full meter pit, or meter vault at that point. Um, which is taking a lot more time than anticipated. Um, other than that, that's my, my normal business, um, I did look into the bathrooms thing, it's about grand. Um, so there was a bathroom that was installed, I, I did talk to a local contractor. Um, kind of bounce some things off him, I did, uh, talk with A U Stevens in the Koch Treasurer's Office. The last bathroom, mall bathroom that was built in the city was for the Parks Department. Um, that would be kind of similar to what we're looking at, was at the girl softball field, uh, there at the park. And that bathroom was thirty thousand dollars and that was in twenty thirteen's when that was built. Um, that does not have a, um, E one pump, the sewer's gravity flow there. Um, talking to local contractor with adding the E one pump with the gravity as well as waters all the way out to, on the other side of the highway. Uh, we're anticipating somewhere between eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to put a permanent bathroom there. Um, the other option that was brought up was a, uh, a port of John. I did get some prices on those, um, depending on whether they want to do one, one men's port of John, one men's port of John or unisex. Um, a handicap accessible port of John's a hundred and fifty two dollars a month. I can only see that ending up in the lake at some point in time. As our, uh, as our boat, uh, our, our boat dock that we have out there just continues to be, uh, vandalized. So, um, you know, like I said before, my main focus is our distribution system and returning warmanes. Um, I don't, I don't foresee the water department having the extra funds here to spend on a bathroom for that area. Um, it has, there hasn't been a bathroom there for years, uh, we hear, like I said, we usually get the question once every forty years. Um, Steve beat me.
Yeah.
He was the exception. But, uh, wanted to give you guys that information, it's a conversation that we had, so wanted to bring that back.
Not feasible, it's not feasible.
Um, other than that, I did, uh, I, I did just get some quotes here, I did bring up, um, a meeting or two ago that I was gonna reach out. We do have a sectional warming on Van Buren Street between Seventh and Eighth Street, it's a ten inch distribution main. We, um, about a month ago, we had a very large watering break on that section of, uh, pipe, we ended up having to sleep in. Um, about six feet of new pipe. And then the next morning, as they were, they worked all day, uh, all throughout the night, um. The next morning, we were going to finish up, um, backfill and lo and behold, we had more water coming out of the hole about forty feet down. Um, it is a, is, it's a big problematic water main, me and John were just kind of talking about it, it's, it's full of repair clamps. Uh, there is talk about repaving Seventh Street, so that intersection, we will have to get into that intersection a little bit to tie all that in. Uh, the rest of the water main does follow the outside of the road around the curb and sidewalk area. Um, I, I have talked to Jason Stone about replacing curvy sidewalk because we have to, uh, due to part of it is with that, runs with that sidewalk and curb on a section of it. Um, but I, I do have three quotes here. Um, the, uh, the quote, quotes are from a utility supply core main and E J P, uh, core main did, or sorry, E J P did fail to quote their correct size warming. They put it eight inch instead of ten inch. Uh, I did reach out, I didn't hear anything back from them. Uh, but I, I do have these two here, if you guys are willing to let me give you those prices without seeking another third quote. Uh, we're running towards the end of our year here where it's gonna start getting, getting tough to replace water main. Um, temperature is gonna start swinging on us, the weather's gonna turn rainy and, um, I don't really get prices here if it's something you're gonna want me to.
The fan, the fan here in three?
Uh, yes, they're here between seventh and eighth.
Yeah.
You asked for the three and they bid the wrong product.
Right, yes, yeah.
Reasonable.
I'm just throwing it out there, because I don't want to throw prices out there and like.
And except one of the other two is not acceptable, be it, I quote. They're right, Phil?
Yeah, as long as you solicit three, okay, you only will receive one, just that, the only requirement is that you seek out three.
Right.
All right.
But, uh, with that, uh, core main came in twenty one thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars and sixty six cents. And, uh, utility supply, they were the low bid with, for, uh, nineteen thousand seventy four dollars and thirty cents. Uh, it's the same material, we use all domestic fittings, it is the, uh, same, same pipe, same bat, same range of aspect that we have for the community. Um, so I would ask if you guys would approve tonight the, uh, quote from utility supply for the nineteen thousand seventy four dollars and thirty cents.
Motion to accept, make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Let's hear it. Thank you, guys.
Thousand seventy four dollars and thirty cents. Here, I have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, line of six and eight in your report.
Yes.
You had mentioned that you were either repairing valve boxes that were damaged or finding valve boxes that were covered up during payment work.
We do, uh, keep track of our material on time and we do send invoices for that.
Who paid for the invoice?
Uh, the, it would be the company that's doing the work.
Confer.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
And is that kind of stuff bid into that project? There was a, is it, are we ultimately all paying for that or is that a mistake on their part that they're then having to take out of the original bid?
That's above my figure.
It is, it is, no, it is not a scope of work within the bid to do that, so anything comes out, it's a, or profit. If that is in addition to what we have, no, that's not an allowable.
I, what is it? So is that, I'm just gonna ask, my biggest question, is that normal? For that, to them to just cover that up and then you having to go back and find it later?
Usually don't have a lot of troubles with it, this, this year's been, uh, this year's been.
Well, you have a lot of contractors on top.
We do, and then that was a lot of, some of it wasn't the painting contractors, some of it was the contractor that came in and was doing rock work. Um, you know, when they take the rock down, the road bed down, you got a valve box sticking this far in the ground, uh, they're using skid loaders, uh, it's, I mean, I'm not blaming anybody, it happens. If you're u- using equipment around things like that, you back over one, most skid loaders don't have a camera in it, you're not, you don't see behind you anyways. Um, you know.
I saw more, I saw a couple severely damaged.
Yeah, so it, it does happen. I mean, I, I'll be the first to tell you, we've been working, uh, in a, in a site of our own and we backed over that box, but it, it does happen, it's, you know, with, uh, with everything going on. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, yeah, but, yeah, it's, that's the, the First Street project, we, uh, with those, those are in concrete. Um, you know, it's, and we do go out, the core contractors pay, but we, like John, we've had a, uh, a, an employee down there on First Street during the whole project to make sure everything's a hundred percent down there. Uh, you know, asphalt can be manipulated a little bit. Uh, we do have valve box risers if valves get too low, we do have some things that we can, we can do, um, a little bit more of asphalt when we can concrete, so.
Screw them down.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's a little easier, once, once they're in that concrete though, they're pretty much locked in, they're not moving. So, uh, we do have, we do have some tools, you can actually set down a valve box to turn it down.
We got First Street going, you got, you had Second Street going, you had Jackson Street.
Oh, yeah.
You got, um, Clay or whatever, about Eagles Club, two blocks there going on.
Yeah.
Seventh Street going, I mean, and it's.
So, yeah. As far as the issues, it's, I, I don't blame neighbors and somebody, it's just things that happen.
I'm thinking also of the improv, you know, this, this, the drive surface.
Right.
Like, if it's done correctly, when the pavement's put down, you're not gonna have a pothole.
Right.
To drive through, but as you go back and repair them, are you bringing those, you're putting the, the risers in and bringing that back up to level?
Yes, sir, yeah, we, we try to not allow any, um, sag around a valve box. All that's gonna do for us is cause, uh, dirt and debris, too much pull down there with water, you know, our valve boxes aren't watertight, then you have uh, two holes in the side of them, so you get your fingers or tools in them, open them up. So we, uh, we do get pretty particular with that because that only hinders us, you know, we, we have a, a very good valve maintenance program, once a year, we turn every valve in town. Um, which allows us to be able to shut our system down for the most part, five hundred feet at a time, with a water main break to where we're not shutting numerous people off of water. Uh, you know, sometimes older sections of town, um, you know, they didn't put four valves in at every intersection, so. It's not every time we can keep it condensed to five hundred feet that we, uh, any newer construction since right early two thousands has been, you know, four valve each intersection and we continuously exercise those valves, that way we can do that, so. Uh, you know, we do have a few in town that are, that are low spots in roads, uh, we do, we do have them flagged, that way when that road is on the list to be repaired, we can have those brought up and we make sure they are where we want, that way we can kind of help that follow.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, other than that, uh, we do, uh, need to talk about our filter five and seven rehab. Um, we go over some things for the, uh, the payment for that, we did, um, meetings past, we did talk about, uh, the water department would fund six hundred thousand dollars of that, energy department would, we would borrow six hundred thousand dollars for that. Um, we do have some, a little bit more concrete numbers here. Um, as far, since we do have the, um, engineers winning bid. Um, so we need to, I guess, discuss that interest rate and adopt a resolution, is that correct, Phil?
Yes.
Um.
Actually, an ordinance.
Authorized, or do you have it?
I have a, I have an ordinance here, it's got license.
That's, yeah, we, we talk.
Percentage the term, five years. Um, the, the ordinance I proposed, uh, put forth today or draft today, we can, you know, allow multiple draws and repaints as you need it, so you don't take it all at once.
Right.
But they don't pay interest on it all at once, one time, you just, the interest as you draw it, and you can repay local repays. But it has to be repaired for five years. Now, that's not to say in the five years, it's anything I feel worth, but they could borrow it again.
That's why we'd like to see it as well, um, with us cutting in low, we'd like to use the water department six hundred thousand first. And then, uh, and then start borrowing from the energy department, just what we need as needed.
So this will be a not to exceed, now, I think the total hard cost we've got, plus engineering brings in about nine hundred seventy two thousand dollars.
Right.
But the, the budget also includes contingencies, I don't know what that is, how much that is, it's always run into some, or always, but sometimes you run into things in anticipation.
Right.
And so there is a contingency budget, five to ten percent usually. Um, so I don't know, uh, you need to establish amount not to exceed.
Right.
Um, you have a feeling for what that would be?
Uh, we, I, I would like to ask for the, the six hundred thousand that we were at, and just not to exceed the six hundred thousand, I don't think we will exceed that by any means. Um, just with the alternates, I know you all sat in on that bidding process, uh, which is kind of nice to, uh, that way everybody understands that and kind of what the alternate, the MA one, the MA two alternates were with that bidding process, so. Um, there's some, some money to be saved there depending on the, the direction they go, with removing those troughs, uh, the silo loss troughs there. Um, so there could be money saved there as well, uh, but I, I don't want to get to the point to where we don't ask for the full six hundred thousand and we're still make with our project and have to wait for a meeting in order to continue forward. Uh, I feel like that six hundred thousand dollar mark is.
Six hundred will give about a twenty percent contingency for the projects. It should be more.
This has been a well specked out project, it's been looked at for.
We've been working on this for about a year and a half.
She had a very expen- experienced engineer.
Commonwealth did design the plant the first time and uh John Wetzel did do the. Filter plant upgrade in twenty nineteen with Midwest Engineering, so we, we have it from a original build to. The he was he was the engineer that oversee the upgrade to the water plant in twenty nineteen as well. So we feel very confident with what we've got here as far as uh design and repair, so.
Yeah, so the amounts, the amount six hundred thousand. Is requested around, and then the other thing is what the interest rate?
That's correct.
What's our historic interest rate?
Waste water was that?
Zero.
Zero, zero? Waste water and water to the.
Fair that it, John, the money sitting in one account earning four point two that is taken out of that, used for another department. That we don't charge four point two to keep them happy. He's got. It's not the way it's been done in the past, but. Interest is what you're after, to give the electric department, yes. If we're, if we wanna give the water department a little bit of grade, then no.
Well, I think it's all. Taking out the left part and putting it in the right. Black better terminology. I don't wanna, you know. Seemingly John has a little. Mistake that he can keep this, keep us from raising that rate, and I need you to not raise your rate. I mean, don't look into Tom, if there's complications on it, it doesn't make anything. Doesn't reduce, just reduce a little bit of the interest income that he would get over the next five years.
John.
Yeah, that was, he's the partner. You know, John's not getting this, no. Be clear on that, John's not getting it. That's not my, it's, it's not.
We just gotta decide if you like the right pocket or the left pocket better.
Steve really hit the nail on the head, I mean, any interest that we type back to the energy departments reflects on utility rate increases in future.
Trying to side with that side of things especially, I don't think it's fair to get to, I I think there should be a little bit of penalty for you borrowing. I don't, do have, do not work in the past, I don't mind.
I like, I'm fine with it too. So a motion uh for two and a half.
Over five years.
Over five years. With a max of six hundred thousand. Yeah, first and second, all those in favor? Any opposed?
No, uh other than that, uh yeah, I thank you guys for that, uh I knew, I know I've asked for a lot here tonight. Um we wanna keep our, our distribution system moving in the right direction with blowaway replacements and uh. Getting the filter system going again, um we do have a tentative start date of October twelfth for Kiefer Brothers to be on site. Um they do have a hundred and fifty day completion, um so we're looking to be back in service and running by the. First few months of next year. So um there are some variables in there with some of these requirements that they do have to get from the filter company that could delay things, just. You know, if it's not available at the time needed, but uh we are looking to start, we said, October twelfth and. Um hundred fifty day completion dates and. Other than that, that's all I have.
What, uh twenty twenty five, twenty two?
Motion to number orders twenty twenty five, twenty two in order to solve rising loan from electric. Uh cash reserve fund to give us the warrant.
I'll make that motion.
I'm saying it.
Yeah, first and second, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries.
I have to suspend the rules about the same.
First and second, suspend rules, all those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?
I'll second that.
Yeah, two, the motion to adopt and the second, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Kissler. Four eyes, one absence.
I did have one extra question. Whenever it like they went back over that, Kiefer Brothers, they went back over that and they felt comfortable with those numbers.
They did, yeah, they went and pulled it there, did not like, they're completely comfortable with it, they actually had a. A couple there, the site superintendent is gonna be on the job, he did come out this past week and kinda take some hard measurements. Uh they they had some guys come out for pre-construction meeting or pre-bid meeting, um they took a lot of pictures. But he was out the other day taking measurements and stuff and me and him were talking about it, and they're, they're comfortable with their price, they just, yeah.
I think they're forty eight hours and. We didn't breathe for forty eight hours.
Right, yep. They're content, this is, this is their scope of work, they just uh got done with the water treatment plant, um over in Illinois. Uh this this group that's gonna be here, he he told me that this is another walk in the park for them.
Seven hundred fifty two thousand walk.
Didn't think put a bathroom on there.
City attorney push you by here. City clerk, dog's tickle does.
We uh. First one is uh. Allow the appropriation to move from. One major budget classification to another within the same fund or department. It but never going over. Never keeping with the total. And uh this is, this this is that. Cause some of the accounts, you know, when you do budgets, accounts are, they're just estimates and trying to true it up.
What is the average amount of like? Moving that you do, I mean, isn't like.
Last year we did, we hard had in.
Yeah.
Because it does allow, I I can move within. The major budget classifications, and that seems to be where much of the move is. Police officer here or lieutenant.
Right, but if we're moving things from like. The sidewalk fund to like a street paving fund or something.
That that's what we're talking about.
Could we do like over a certain, like anything over a cer- I mean, like I I feel like if you're moving it from lieutenant to that. That's not that big a deal and I think go ahead and do that, but if it's moving from like new sidewalks to street paving. Like I would like to know about that, just not if that affects us, then whenever we're like, why aren't these new sidewalks, and it's because there's no money in those accounts.
You you have the, you have the total budget amount.
Yeah.
And all of here, say, we bid, we 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 thought we needed five hundred thousand dollars for the rock this year. And we ended up send, really need seven hundred thousand dollars for the rock, he has two hundred thousand dollars. In his pipe fund and we haven't spent as much, bought as much pipe. So he, that's what Tom can true that, true that up, so.
I get that, but I want there to be some funds that aren't movable. And the sidewalk fund, I think is one that I feel pretty strongly about, because we don't even, we don't have very much money in there, so I don't really want anything moved out of that one, I think that. What, twenty five thousand is what we had in there and I think uh at the bare minimum, twenty five thousand of new sidewalks every year is. Isn't necessary.
You're also getting close to the end of the year where if you don't have that money spent.
You're getting to the end of the year where you're gonna lose your appropriation.
You're losing.
It's not being dealt or spent. As you committed, permitted to spend it, encumber it, because you're gonna lose that.
Yeah, you can't.
We don't lose it, it goes back to general. That is, that is one funded where everything gets spent.
Right, but I mean, so I think that would just get us more incentive. I just, I I don't know, we're looking at the budget for sidewalk numbers, and I know that this is. A miniscule amount in the entire budget, but that's something that's a big deal, but I feel like there haven't been that many sidewalk projects here.
I don't know that it takes for a made for twenty five thousand dollars.
That and so Jason will say it doesn't take that many, but if we're only paying for materials, because we have manpower and we're pouring iron on the sidewalks. They did almost all of Chestnut Street, like that pool section, we did it in one year for twenty five thousand dollars, so. I mean, I think that it does go a little bit further because we're not paying for like, we are paying for labor, but it's coming out of a different bucket, so I just think that. I I just wanna have a better like, a sidewalk plan or different plans, and I think that. They said, oh, this money is allocated somewhere else because of that, and I I just wanna make sure that doesn't happen on a certain number of key things.
I agree with you, I think there's. I don't know, maybe, maybe it. It ought to fall back on more on the department head who. Elected not to spend that money for the year, then allow to be moved somewhere else. That should be an, it should be an issue that maybe we need to be a little more direct with department head about. How we expect that money to be spent and not just that we're allowing it to be spent for that category, but. But I, I would kinda like to see, you know, when those kinda things happen, we set the budget in October, September, October. Then going to affect till January one, and then at the end of that next year is when this really is necessary, but.
Yeah, we don't want any of those funds you see. Uh you know, there 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 are funds in there for things like equipment repair, building repair. Project costs, no, we try to spend every. Whether it be parks, uh whether it be street, anything that, there's projects in there, whether it be street money, sidewalk money. Uh anything for improvements at parks, we spend every penny of that money, usually have to bring in a little lit. Cause we overspend it by a few thousand here and there, it's better overspend a little bit that. Or we encumber it towards a project for the next year by actually going under contract. What, you know, what I saw last year. Of those items, or they were normally well allocated for utilities or allocated for. Uh building repair or something like that, or we're in the cover, we're gonna have to do that with a couple of uh. Funds this year, we could, fire department is one of those where there's uh. Normally we have about less than twenty thousand dollars where we pay for response, it's twenty eight thousand. Uh we only have about four or five thousand left for the rest of the year. They are uh volunteers, so some of that's gonna come out of some of the building repair budgets, utility budget, other. Budgets that they had within the fire department to move over, it's not, we didn't quit buying equipment, we didn't quit. Projects money will be spent, you know, and that's just. If it's designated towards a project, it'll be spent unless. If we can't get it done because weather, get it, uh cover it, do it as quickly as we can. You know, a lot more, we're seeing this year and what we saw last year was more. Like I said, those those, or bad money set aside for prepared work and that type of thing, it's been. Either fire department last year, we didn't spend all of our salary money, this year what we're gonna have. It's new trend, every fire department is facing it in the county right now.
Would it, would it be possible then to just maybe generate a report when it happens? You know, like there's clearly a record kept when money gets moved from one line out of there. I finished the ordinance. I don't necessarily do it when it happens, because we're talking. A hundred dollars here, a few hundred dollars here, thousands of dollars here.
Can we do it maybe quarterly? If once a quarter has something.
It's gonna happen more towards the end of the year, cause you're running out of. Yeah, cause we won't know.
Cause I think that all those budget, you have to do to know that, okay, this one, are they consistently moving it out of this account and this account? Or if it's just like, I would think the fire department or things that are. Or it's more of a fluke or it's something you, it's not a fixed cost, or you can't, it's not in a budget, you just, that is gonna fluctuate, but if we just kind of. I don't know.
About when I do it, just give you the report. That actually finishes the, the order.
That sounds great.
To show where, where the, where the money was manipulated.
For the front account, the two account, what was for work. That's what, that's what. The dollar. I think that may be even. But I'll make sure that.
Thank you.
If I do, if it was, I'll make a point to highlight it.
So we need to.
Two thousand, twenty five, twenty.
So if we have a motion to approve, uh how do you remember?
Introduce the number?
Introduce the number, I'm sorry, twenty twenty five, what the three? I have first, second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll second that.
We have a first, second to spend rules, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carries.
I'm here to adopt.
I'll say it.
Any opposed?
Kissler, uh man, uh McPhair, uh multi, where, four eyes, one absence.
Now you have a. Gonna review the salary ordinance?
Yeah, those are uh. Basically what you, what you got there is current. And then to the sides of both of those, the elected officers and the employees, your different percentage option.
Didn't we have in the budget three percent?
And this is the same as we've had in years past, correct, not different?
Not given that much in the past. What was your, two, two and a half ones?
Just gave that. Trying to think of this. Two and a half. Three was. Last year. I say this every year we do this, so I'm gonna say it again, um just that we've got good people in the mayor's office, we get. Good people in the clerk treasurer's office. Who possibly will be there someday, and in order to get good people. To continue to want to be in those positions, they have to pay. An amount of money that's commensurate with the work and the expectations. That our citizens have for the people in those positions, you put a lot on the line, reputation and. Risk and use all kinds of things by holding those positions, as do the council members, and so. I believe that. We should. We should acknowledge that with proper pay increases for. The mayor's office, our treasurer's office and the council positions. Um. Or there's gonna be a day somewhere down the road when those positions are being paid. Considerably less than what the market should bear and good people are not gonna wanna fill them. And you're gonna pin. A future council with the decision, as Phil says way more eloquently than I do, but pin a future council with the decision. To make a dramat- give themselves a dramatic increase in pay. Which is never gonna look right to the citizens that voted for them. This is a, you know, it's a difficult conversation to have because we're voting ourselves a pay raise, and I get that. But I don't think it's fair for us to say, well, we're gonna take nothing, or we're gonna take one. And then next year, we're gonna take one or two, and the next year we take nothing, and, and then ten years from now. This position still pays about what it does now. And nobody wants to. Fill the role and then we, we pin that council on having to double the salaries, uh, I think doing it a little bit at a time. Is the right way to do it.
Well, I also don't think it's, it's a raise, if the rate of inflation is three percent and we increase our salary by three percent. We're making the exact same thing in next year's dollars that we're making in today's dollars, so it's not. I think whenever people say raise, it's not like I'm saying, we are getting a fifty. Percent bonus or not, we're just keeping it steady, you know, that I, I think. Anything below the inflation rate is a slap in the face because you're making less last year than you made. Or this year, you know, next year than you made the year before, so I think that it's not. I, I, for me, it's not even on the table to give anyone less than three percent because that's about what the inflation rate is. And I think then if you wanna give someone an actual raise, then we need to talk over three percent.
July of twenty. Twenty five versus July of twenty twenty four, the inflation rate was two point nine percent. So in that last twelve month period ending in July of twenty twenty five, cost of living was up two point nine. And so keeping that number in mind, I think a three percent pay raises is right in the ballpark of where it should be. And we probably, if I'm being honest here, we are, let's just say being as forthcoming. With my words as I am with my thoughts, I think there's probably a discussion that needs to be had at some point down the road. About the clerk treasurer's salary and the mayor's salary. That might need to be right sized more than just a three percent increase. Uh, on an annual basis, we need to, we need to maybe do a deeper study as a council. As to what other mayors across the state. Are paid and what other clerk treasurers are being paid.
Those numbers are available to us every year from May.
But I think, I think I'm gonna make that decision in budget time because, you know, very budgeted.
Right.
This money, so you can't. I'm gonna find that. Golden egg if we're gonna have to pay more.
But I think, I, I'm not suggesting. Or this, this budget, but do you think it's something that we ought really to chat? Maybe we need to. Get those numbers from aim and have a conversation before next budget season and see if it's something that we, that we wanna do.
And I will say that, uh, because some people are already close to their max, they don't always hit that three.
And another thing is what, what we'll be doing is raising the high range.
The high range.
He may not. Some people may get more than.
Some people, or some people may get two. You know, so it. Because you're changing the break.
Right. So we had that. We had that overall, it's a three.
It averages to that.
So I make a motion, we put the salary ordinance for, for the city employees a three percent. Increase.
Okay, so can you repeat what you said though, that if we put the range at a three percent increase, that then? Some people may not get three percent?
If you look at your. Position, what, what I said was, we're, we're moving the. Uh, high range of three percent.
Okay.
And that's.
Some of the positions are paid range. The range, they made it more than three percent.
Oh, right, okay.
And some are paid by certifications and by different things. But that's gotta spell out here, especially if there's.
I know there's a lot of people that watch this meeting on purpose, this particular meeting, and so I think before it may have that be explained. That we're saying three percent. And we need to be very clear about, we're, we're putting three percent more on the high end of the range. But where each individual employee fits in that range. Doesn't necessarily mean that every employee is gonna see a three percent increase in their payment here, right? Am I saying that accurately? Yeah, okay. Everybody that's watching, I want you to understand.
Your pay raise, particularly police departments that I pulled up. They were from twenty three, twenty six to thirty five, we're depending on their pay range, so. That's tied below or below the high, so depending on where they falls, which rate it's gonna be right on.
I should know there's some misunderstandings. So Milan has, has. Moved to make a three percent A raise.
Possibly up to three percent, yes.
Yeah, three percent increase in the range.
Right, right.
Okay.
The motion. To increase the range.
The only, the only thing, my only comment to that is you just said the, uh, cost of living. Increases whatever is two point nine. So we're giving the points, technically we're giving him a one, one increase. Seems sort of difficult. Um, so I suggested three and a half, that's what I was gonna suggest, three and a half. So it was a half a percent higher than that. Um, if Tom can make those. Numbers come, come out in the budget. We post.
Oh, but, yeah, well. I mean. They, they will come out, I mean, uh, it may be something else that doesn't.
I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's even near our biggest expense in budget.
Yeah. And to me, probably the most critical expense.
I would be more inclined to three now.
Questions on the floor.
No second to, there's a motion, no second.
Yeah.
So.
That's the major motion between them. Well, that's not a motion. I can motion it, I just didn't.
First motion could die in the last second.
I know, I don't wanna get the city to be in a pickle, but I also know that we are blessed with good employees and I want them to feel. At least appreciated and if they're not making, I mean, I think three percent is. I know that's in my firm. That they give out a range and sometimes whenever in that range. That it is three percent, that's really frustrating to me cuz that feels like nothing. You're giving me nothing, you know, less than three percent, it's meaningless. But I think three and a half is at least, we appreciate you, we're doing, again. You also have. You know, like other benefits within working with the city that are. That are beneficial, but.
With very good insurance built.
Insurance and paid holidays, there's, that's, that is, um, something, you know what I mean, that, um, that is a benefit.
That is, that is the attraction, I'll sometimes.
Okay, I move for three and a half percent. Or I make that motion. Three and a half percent.
Motion of three.
Okay, we have three, let's say.
Motion, so we're re- ready to entertain, do a motion that.
I will second the one from the three and a half.
All right, we have first and the second.
Getting that was clear.
All right, I'll lose some favor. Any opposed? My motion carries.
How did you want to adopt that tonight or join ring?
Well, we, we couldn't adopt it tonight, and, and the senior of the HR has it that. They can, they can do the insurances. That are tied to it.
So it'd be, uh.
Let's suspend the rules.
Your is twenty twenty five dash twenty four, is that?
Twenty four, yeah.
So.
This is the hourly employees.
There's a bit of motion to introduce the number, uh, the, uh. Hour ordinance, twenty twenty five.
Motion made.
I'll second.
We got a first and second to introduce, uh, twenty twenty five dash two four. All those favor. Any opposed? My motion carries.
Motion to suspend.
I'll second.
You got a motion and a second to suspend, all those favor. And I opposed. All right, motion carries, sorry, I slowed. Got a motion to adopt.
I will second the motion to adopt.
Get a second, all those in favor. Any opposed? All right, carries.
Where, four eyes, one apps.
Now. The consideration of the. Left and official.
It'll be conversation, I guess.
I feel like, um, this one, that. I'm okay with, uh, like, I, I'm not as upset with us not giving you raises in this, but I, I do, I think anything less than three percent is reckless. So if we don't get three and a half, I'm okay with that, but I think anything less than three is correct. Oh, but then is this a, all elected officials?
Yes, we get included mayor and the mayor. Anyway, I think we should give.
Break it out.
We can give the elective. Mayor, mayor and treasurer, the three and a half like we did the employees, that we could take.
Is there something for next year that there is a cap? Or something you had mentioned before?
There could be that the, uh, maximum levy could be reduced for twenty twenty seven. Which make it more difficult for. Uh. To give higher raises. Uh, however, you know, realizing that. If we're already raising these maximums and it. There are people that are still below that, there can still be room in twenty twenty seven, to give them raises. There wouldn't be uncollected officials cuz you would have a cap that you would have to get up.
Maybe able to move them within the range.
Yes.
But not.
Cuz there is no range for like officials, it's that, that about. Is that right, Tom?
That's right. Happy increase or decrease. Uh, within the year.
So our maximum levy for next year is four percent, if we can cover it. You know, with, with our revenues, uh, uh, cuz we have, revenues are still an unknown year for a while, but. Uh, normally we don't, aren't able to cover the four, four percent, even though we've mentioned that, uh. I can, I can tell you, I, I've. People are going to work from zero percent to nine percent across the state venue. Uh, for that reason, they're trying, trying to do, some people are holding off this year and some people are going high. I think that we have to see what's best for the city, I believe, and what other people are doing, so. That's, that's a decision you all sit here to forward made over and over again. Just have some good discussion, make the right move. My suggestion.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we should make sure you have a, oh, oh. You have more information, but I mean. I do it to the steering point. Cuz I don't think we're gonna, and we should have more, and it should be because of the. Proposed cap maybe or they're gonna do, so.
So. We, we are different in some areas because of our utility allocation. That we utilize from, so it's a little different.
Yeah.
And those, those communities that don't have, that really hurts.
Yeah.
Well, I feel the most strong about this, and I think that. We should just keep the elected officers across the board. This year at the same as what we're. Allocating for every city employee.
Yeah, I'll impose it.
Yes, and so I would make that motion. And maybe three and a half.
Across the board.
Yes.
We have a motion to three and a half and a second, all those favor. Any opposed?
The ordinance number twenty five dash twenty five.
Make motion to introduce the same night as introduced, or pass the same night.
And a second, all those in favor.
Now we can spend the rules and move.
Let me make an app motion.
Yeah.
All right, second, but you have, uh, all those in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And move to adopt, oh, you did that most, I'll second it.
Yeah, the first and the second and, uh, to adopt, all those favor. Any opposed? Thank you.
Just like, uh, bound, uh, McFerrin, uh, Volty. Where? Four eyes, one apps.
Got a lot of eyes.
Okay, I guess we're, uh, at other items now, there's council and council items. And citizens, citizen items.
Uh, oh, yeah, the herbs fest is this weekend.
I may make note of that, that the herbs fest is this weekend, if you get to.
This week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Weather's gonna be great.
So, yeah, come on down. Right?
We have fourteen teams from five ever states that'll be arriving in town Friday. Be heavy dinner around town, we'll have a little reception, if you wanna come, be between five and seven at the old town hall. For the teams that are gonna come in early, uh. And it'll be a, a women's softball, it's not a competitive, it's more. They come here for fun, uh, next year we'll. Kind of looking to have possibly men and women both next year.
It's what field they're gonna use.
They actually have three types of terms, this, uh, this is group that normally this week is at the field greens. They wanted in Iowa, they're here.
They're in Lake City.
At the Lake State, so. It's exhibition. Uh, we, we hope that saw dries out very good before, we'll work on it for Saturday, so just get it. Cuz they will be running seventy split bases, which means they'll be playing in the new saw. We anticipated that, it's, it's taken root, so.
Glad to have it, it's good entertainment.
Uh, and it's free to get in.
And so what do you want to do, do you have that on Saturday?
You start at eight AM and go till about ten or eleven that night.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, there's fourteen teams, uh, schedule has been posted on our website, it's also been posted on the herbs fest website. Uh, not website, I should say, our Facebook. And we have somebody here that's been waiting for us to shut up so she can speak, so.
Go ahead, go ahead, in our honor.
You're gonna introduce yourself?
I, um, just getting an update on the recording, that it is, they are thinking things up. But we're seeing that from one place, it's just going to another place, as in now it's going into the yard. And so the decrease, it's not a decrease in buying things either, because we're seeing new things, and then when things are being moved away, we're wondering where is it probably going? So, you know, just going to one of the other properties. I will say though, Donny Heim has been amazing at communicating with me. That when I have questions, he comes back and gives the, you know, tells me everything, and I know he doesn't have to do that because I'm just, I'm a citizen, but he's been doing very good about. Working with, and so I feel much better at this point that knowing that things will get resolved eventually. Because it, it is a primary.
It is a process.
Absolutely, and I know that this is the first time, you know, that we're really working through the full process, so we know that there's going to be learning things along the way. Don't have a problem with it, you know, that's being a part of. That learning process so that we know what we need to do next time to be able to help improve and make it, get that more scooped for. To all, so.
City's lost, we have offenders and citizens for a status here in October one, ten thirty. Certain court, so. The, uh, fans have been ordered to appear and to approach the court about their. Progresses and. What their plan is.
What time is it?
Ten thirty on October one.
Well, it's kinda a circuit court.
That was it.
So, uh.
Sure, no more items, uh. No more items, uh, I, we're entertaining them.
I move to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second it.
Uh, we have first, second, all those in favor?
Uh, I.
Any opposed?